Mr. Chairman, we are live again.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. This is the afternoon session of January 24th. Our next agenda item is a presentation from the Payette National Forest, Crassell District Ranger Dave Hogan. So, we will turn it over to you guys.
Appreciate it. Good afternoon. I'm guessing we got L., Dave and Sheri there today. We can't see you guys, so I think the last time I was able to see a video of the room, but we'll go with what we got.
Well, we're still handsome as ever, so don't worry about that.
Very good, alright. Well, today, we thought we'd have an opportunity here to introduce our couple employees from our forest here that are in new leadership roles. They've been with us for years, but wanted to kick off with that. And then Jenny and I have some updates, so we got opportunities to talk McCall district updates, Crassell district updates, and then preparedness for the fire season if you guys have questions for that too. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dave Vining, our new fire staff officer.
Welcome, Dave.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just thought I would come by and introduce myself. Apologize for not making it in person. Just dealing with some illness in the family. Didn't want to bring it up to the commissioner meeting, so decided to try to do this virtually instead. And hopefully, one of these days, I'll be able to come up and meet all of you in person. But, just real quick, so again, my name is Dave Vining. I am the new Payette Fire Staff Officer, and that's by Sean Johnson. I think a lot of you knew who Sean was, and he retired in late September. And I just got his job a couple of weeks ago. Pretty big shoes to fill, but I'm working on it. And, you know, one of the things we're going through on the Payette right now in fire is a lot of retirements and people moving on. And so, both myself and Tom Schultz, who's also on the screen, has a new position. And he's in Vice Rod Dine's job. Rod took a new job at the regional office. And then also, on the Payette Fire Staff level is Patrick Shaw. And he's new into our fuels position. So, a lot of change there. And so, we're just trying to get out and introduce ourselves and meet all of our commissioners and partners and cooperators. A little bit about myself, so I was raised in southern Idaho, and I've worked with the Forest Service and the BLM since 1993. Just primarily Sawtooth National Forest, Boise BLM, and the Payette National Forest. I've been on the Payette since 2004 and worked in Council, New Meadows and McCall. My last job was I was the Fire Management Officer for New Meadows and McCall Ranger districts. So, I've been on the Payette for quite a while. I feel like I know a lot of the country, and I know a lot of the people in the communities, but I still have a lot to learn. So, with that, I just, you know, with my new job, I'm trying to set some priorities for myself and try to focus our work within the Fire and Fuels Program. And three of those priorities for me that I thought you would be interested in include treating fuels across the forest. So, getting more work done across the forest to protect our values at risk and to protect our forests from bugs and disease and wildfire and other disturbances. As you guys know, there's a lot of crazy fires going on in the West lately. And I think we can do more, and we will do more, in preparing the Payette National Forest for fire impact. And I'm really interested in using all tools available. Thinning, logging, prescribed fire, mastication, and everything else we can do to treat fuels on the Payette National Forest and even, you know, helping when it's appropriate on private land, state, or whatever we need to do across jurisdictional lines there. And my second one is to keep focusing on having a safe, effective, and efficient response to fire. So, we have a really good workforce, a lot of initial attack capacity on the Payette National Forest, and just keep enhancing that and working with those groups and working with our partners, including SIPA and all of our rural and county fire departments to have that really safe, effective, and efficient response. Now, the last priority for me on this list is relationships. I really want to build those relationships with not only you, but fire chiefs, the sheriff department, IDL, and our communities. I feel like we can get a lot more done when we're all working as a team, have common goals, and, you know, support each other in what we have going on. So, those are kind of my three top priorities for the program in the near future. So, that's basically what I have. You know, your primary point of contact will always be the district rangers and Linda, of course. But if you ever have any questions regarding fire management or fuels management, or if you have any issues or anything, you can always reach out and give me a call. I'm always available. I have some cards I was going to bring. I don't have them. I'll get them to you so you have my contact information. And, yeah, I'm really looking forward to, you know, developing that relationship with you all and working with all the county employees.
Dave, I appreciate that. This is Commissioner Hasbrook. I wanted to ask you, the deal, it took quite a few years to get to it, but, you know, SIPA has kind of evolved into an initial attack on a lot of these local wildland fires. And it seems to me like that's really working out well. Is that kind of the feeling you guys have on your side as well?
You know, SIPA has really stepped up and is helping us out. We have a great relationship with SIPA right now. Paul Wagner and Rich Stiles there. They're great partners, and we're working really well together. And we're going to try to enhance that relationship and have them start helping us doing some fuels work also.
Good. Good. Hey, who's next?
Tom, go for it. Introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'll just quickly say hi. I'm Tom Schultz, newly hired into the Deputy Fire Staff position on the Payette National Forest. So, I'll be working directly with Dave Vining and helping build our program and move things forward. And really, I just wanted to say hi introduction so you can see my face. And I'm sure we'll be working together more in the future. So, right now, I'm the East Zone Fire Management Officer on the Crassell Ranger District. I've been here for the last about four years and start my new job as the Deputy Fire Staff on Monday. So, looking forward to those new challenges. Thanks for having us.
Tom, just a quick question. Are you related to Tom Schultz, who used to be head of IDL years back? You probably get that a lot, huh?
Yeah, I've had that question. I've actually fielded a few phone calls for him. Knowledge, we're not related.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, who's next?
Jenny, go for it. On some updates from McCall District.
Yep. And first of all, I want to, I have to say, I'm very excited to have Dave and Tom in their new roles. And for me, I've been lucky enough to work with both of them in their previous roles. So, for me, having them be in these two new roles is really exciting for me. So, congratulations, guys, and I look forward to working with you both in these new roles. So, I just wanted to, I know Commissioner Bingaman's been very involved in a lot of these, but I just wanted to update or share some of the projects that we've brought through Small NEPA last, well, I think it was last October, gone through scoping. I've missed the last couple of county commissioner meetings, so I just wanted to share what we're looking at. A couple are, one is squarely on, well, two are in Adams County, but close enough to Valley County that I would expect that you would all be interested. So, the first project is a Bear Basin project. And Bear Basin, as you all know, is right, it's both in Adams and Valley County. It's essentially addressing our summer trails. And I think it was in 2005 or 2007, we did an analysis and approved the construction of about 7.3 miles of trails in that area. Since that time, about seven to eight additional unauthorized trails have shown up. And so, what we've been doing is essentially trying to take a look at the trails that have shown up, try to create a sustainable trail system out there without having too many trails, but also providing that opportunity and also that connection to some of the other trails. And so, this proposal, right now, what we scoped with was we would add about 5.6 miles of trails to the system, and then we would look at decommissioning some others. And we did have a little relocation. I did review some of our comments, the public comments, and we might actually modify that. We got a specific comment from Fish and Game that mentioned one of our relocations would go right by Goss Hawk Nest. So, we'll probably not relocate that trail and maybe keep it in that same location. But, so that's the project. It's, and like I said, we had 54 or so comments. So, what the decision may be, may be slightly changed from what we actually went out for comment. But it was great to have so many interested people in this project. Any questions in particular on that one?
Jennifer, this is Commissioner Hasbrook. I just want to say thank you for looking at those trails. As you guys know, we've been dealing with overuse and unauthorized trails for many, many, many years. And I'm glad you guys are at a mindset that, hey, if it might work, maybe we can keep it. If we move it a little bit, it'll work better, but you're being more open-minded to those increases in miles because, as we all know, the people are coming here pretty hard and fast. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I can move to the next one. Okay, the next project is another trail project. It's the Payette Lake East Side Trail. And one of the things that we're really looking at is just providing those connections. I mean, Bear Basin, how it was essentially set up, didn't have a connection to some of the IDL trails. And so, that's some of the things that we're looking at. So, this Payette Lake East Side Trail was actually proposed by, I think, Simba. And it was a total of 3.2 miles of trail on the east side of Payette Lake, connecting IDL land to national forest land. About 0.7 of that 3.2 miles would be constructed on national forest system land and connect to an existing motorized trail, the Fall Creek Loop, on the east side of the lake. There again, we received about 54 comments. Not all the same commenters, not the same. I didn't have to read 108 comments that said the same thing. So, and, you know, for the most part, people are really supportive and excited about having those connections. Any questions on that?
Oh, we're fully in support of that. Thank you.
Jenny, I didn't have any questions either. Most of them were my projects.
I know. Well, that's why, you've heard of this a number of times, Dave. So, okay. Yeah. Yeah, and we appreciate it. I mean, I think that I'm proud of the projects that are moving forward, which is always exciting.
Right. I was going to say, I do appreciate your cooperation and collaboration on a lot of the stuff that we've been working on.
Thanks. Okay, the next project is a Little Ski Hill lighting project. So, the Little Ski Hill currently has, they currently replaced their lighting, I think it was two years ago, and they went with less, they're not dark sky compliant, but more, they're less obtrusive than the previous lighting. And so, we authorized them to replace that lighting years ago, or a couple of years ago. And they've brought in another proposal to add another 25 poles with an additional 65 fixtures, which would essentially light up the whole ski area, every run. So, it would be, it would go from 15 acres of lighted ski terrain to 30 acres of lighted ski terrain. There, we did go out for public comment, and really, we did have some comments from one of the tribes about migratory birds and just kind of the dark sky compliancy. And then, also, a comment from Department of Transportation, just a little bit concerned about the lighting affecting people coming up the road. So, I've asked the Little Ski Hill to provide some information to make sure that that wouldn't affect traffic or cause a safety issue. So, that's another project that we're hopefully moving forward with here really soon. Any questions?
I don't think so.
Okay. The last one is the St. Helen's Mine Project. I think this is just an update. It's, this project is in Adams County, right off Goose Lake Road, less than a mile up from Highway 55. There've been previous, I think there was Brundage Plaster out there before. So, there's been previous mining activity out there, a lot of it pretty small scale. This project is about five acres, and it's, they're mining for ultra potashic, kind of an ash to be used as fertilizer. And so, it's not like hard rock mining, so it'll be interesting. They'll be doing all their processing off-site, and we should be, we went out for public comment, and we should be sending the draft EA for comment next week, hopefully, February 3rd, with hopefully, a decision by September. And any questions on that one?
Jennifer, can you tell me this ash, is it a nitrogen supply or phosphorus, like a, or a potash? Or, that's something new I've never heard of.
Yeah, I know, and it's more of like a potash kind of thing, but it's really interesting going out with the proponents and walking around and hearing all the geology of it. And so, there's a volcanic ring around in that area, so it is some sort of similar to a potash.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have anything else unless you all have any questions.
No, I think it's Dave's turn now.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Yep, good afternoon, commissioners. So, I just wanted to give an update on the East Fork-South Fork Restoration and Access Management Plan Project. It's really still on the same stage that it was at the last meeting. We received public comment. We're looking at the comment to refine the proposed action and also the alternatives. And then, we need to get that, those descriptions to our team here on the forest to review and analyze the effects and then put that into a draft environmental assessment that the public would have a chance. And you guys would be able to take a chance or have a chance to give us really specific comments where the scoping document just didn't have that specificity to let folks really see with really good detail of what was being proposed. And so, this is all things motorized travel, just like the previous two, the Big Creek ramp and then the South Fork ramp. This is the next one of those for the East Fork area, from the mouth of the East Fork up to Yellow Pine and up to Stibnite, and then actually, all the way out to Thunder Mountain. And we'll be looking at motorized routes for vehicle traffic, like trucks and cars, and two-wheel motorized for motorcycles, 50-inch and less ATVs, and also trails for other vehicles also. Also be looking at our dispersed camping along those routes of how people dispersed camp and how we display that to the public of where those areas are. I'm trying to think anything else, but that's, so what I would say is, you haven't missed anything to give us more specific comment. It's still coming. It's taken a little bit more time, probably than what we were thinking to get all of our GIS mapping layers organized and get things to the point where, yeah, that we give it to our internal folks to start analyzing the effects and telling us more details. So, that's where we're at with the East Fork-South Fork Restoration Access Management Plan Project. Any questions?
Dave, this is Sheri Moppen. Are you guys looking at doing any campground expansion in that area at all?
Not with this project. Yeah, as far as like a developed campground. The one developed campground on the Payette would be there at Old East Fork, right just to the west of Yellow Pine. And then, there's a campsite or two down at Dead Man's. You can camp in there. But most of it's, yeah, just dispersed. There's like 31 dispersed sites, I think, that we have documented from Yellow Pine all the way out to Thunder Mountain. So, we're looking at those and trying to make sure we provide enough. But nothing developed, not in this motorized travel project. Sheri?
Hey.
Do you have a spot you were thinking needs?
No, but we are going to start a strategic plan for our recreation. And, you know, I mean, we all know what's happened with COVID. We've just been bombarded with people just coming and parking anywhere and everywhere. And that's the greatest risk, of course, for wildfire and that type of thing and, you know, environmental issues. So, we're just looking at, looking maybe for partnerships on, you know, where can we put some campgrounds? You know, how do we control some of these access points and just make a better experience for people coming up here?
Yeah, I know, you know, we do track like our, oh, the rates of, you know, occupancy rates. At least I know we do over on our site, so we can tell you like which ones are full and which ones still have capacity. You know, I think, at least on the Crassell, we're probably still underutilized, except during the Chinook fishery. And then, it's way more than you could ever account for. And plus, those people went probably camping at campsite, even if you gave it to them because they want to sleep on their hole and be at their hole in the morning and kind of almost save it that way. So, but yeah, that's good to know that you guys are looking at that. I see Jenny's maybe got some thoughts on the campground.
Yeah, just a project that we're going to bring up, hopefully, in our next Small NEPA. I was just reviewing the proposal, is doing something out by Trapper Cabin, kind of the Squaw Meadows area and the trailhead to French Creek and Center Ridge. And we're looking at a project there, one to do some protection around, fuels protection around the cabin that was vandalized, and then we've spent a lot of time restitution money on fixing that up. The other is to kind of create a better trailhead facility and define camping in that area. Which I think is an exciting project. And then, there was a, we had thought about going bigger, but we decided to stay smaller. And that's what we keep looking at are some of those areas where things just keep growing and trying to figure out how to create more quality, more, and more quality types of experiences. So, we certainly on the McCall District, where we are getting a lot more use, are looking at those. And hopefully, I'll be talking with you in another couple of months about these other projects we'll be bringing forward.
Perfect. And then, hopefully, our strategic plan, we can partner with you guys also on some conversations there that hopefully, we'll kick off here in the next few months and put together a recreation advisory group.
That would be awesome. That would be great.
Yeah, I think something that, you know, after I thought about it for a second there outside of the East Fork area, I mean, the South Fork is going to be receiving a bunch of deferred maintenance upgrades from outhouses getting replaced to some of our signage. I mean, down there at the confluence of the Seession, the South Fork and the East Fork all coming together. There's a plan to do some development there to be more proactive long-term of how people use that site. So, there is some of those things that are started two years ago, kept going again next year, and there's more planned for this year. But there, it's more of, I would say, keeping up with our existing and getting it maintained to standard, probably versus biggering or, you know, adding to. But I still think that the users that are out there will really, they'll notice that investment that's happened through the Great American Outdoors Act funding and previous funding, so I think it would be nice. Well, I think that was what we had, unless you guys have any other questions for any of us.
Right now.
No, I was going to say, one thing, this is Dave. Jenny, we did just sign the Jenkins Crossing Letter of Support as well. So, I think, Doug, are you sending that over today?
I can, absolutely.
I'm sorry, Doug, I didn't get that to you, and that's perfect. Thank you very much for doing that.
I can't think of anything else, you guys. Thanks for all your work. Welcome, Dave and Tom. I'm jealous of Sean. I've known Sean a long, long time, and I hope he's really having lots of fun.
Bet he is. All right, everybody. Thanks for your time, and I'll be in touch to get back on your agenda and keep on talking.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Be safe.
Thank you. Bye.
Next.
All right, we're going to move on down our agenda. Our next item is also a presentation from Idaho Parks and Rec Regional Director, Teresa Perry. You guys want to come up to the table or to the mic, whatever you want to do?
Wherever you prefer.
Table's fine.
Well, there's a microphone right above you, so you do have to use a little bit of outside voices for the public to hear you. You guys are used to doing that, right?
Yeah.
You can yell at us if you want, in other words.
Well, we don't need to do that, so, but I just wanted to first say thank you all for having us, and you all have a full agenda, but we just wanted to take a few minutes of your time. So, my name is Teresa Perry. I think I know most of you and glad to see you all. So, for the, almost the last six months, I've been in new capacity. I'm the South Region Manager. And in the region that I am over, it includes Ponderosa, Lake Cascade, Eagle Island, Lucky Peak, Bruno Dunes, and Three Island Crossing. So, those are the six parks. Idaho State Parks has, we're broken into three regions, the north, the south. In the region, I'd like to give you all just a quick handout. This is a little bit about investments that Idaho State Parks make into our local community and...
Based on the campground occupancy that's given.
Yeah. Thank you. While you're just kind of reviewing that, I'd also like to, just quickly, and I know that the two folks with me today, so Floyd Packer, who is the new park manager at Lake Cascade, and I also have some information for you. But just real quickly, going back to this investment sheet, you can kind of see our visitation, which you had mentioned in the previous presentation, we are at record numbers as well. There is a positive to COVID. I would say it's reflected in our visitation. Of course, with that, also comes the impact to our infrastructure. So, we're actively working, our budget is being presented February 11th is our tentative date. They caused this year's budget to be presented to J.Fact. And so, really hoping that we can see any infrastructure improvements really for our systems, additional restrooms, camping, and that sort of thing. And then, also kind of the wildlife part is the art of that, so we'll see what we can.
Teresa, have you ever been to J.Fact and watched some of that stuff?
Only virtually, not attended.
It's quite an interesting process.
Yep.
It's slow-moving, but it's like you get a lot of different views.
Yep, I think, and I'm really optimistic. Our directors have been upstanding, doing a tremendous job of really telling our story.
Good.
And I think that's important so that we can be more responsive to the type of growth that the entire state is seeing. And then, of course, our interest in the South Region, just our 70% and just be more efficiently and effectively manage and accommodate.
Anything we could do as far as like a letter of support or making some calls to help you guys? Just add, you know, you guys are an integral part of our economy up here and we realize that you need some more money?
Sure. I think Susan Buckson, our director, will be very happy to hear from you all. And Troy Elmore is our operations chief. You may know Troy from a different capacity. He was on the... You may know Troy from a different capacity. He was on the recreation side, um, of our agency. He moved into his position about, eight months or so. Yeah, so last fall, he moved into that position. So yeah, I, I think, I think that's good. Um, we literally are all in this together. Housing is an initiative that our agency is actively working in. We struggle specifically at these two parks, um, with recruiting and retaining employees because of the housing issues, whether that be permanent or seasonal employees. So, um, we're doing our best to be competitive, um, in, in the wage aspect. But without housing, it's just, it's just really difficult. So statewide, it's a challenge for our agency and we are looking at just different options. Trying to be creative, partnering with other agencies. So I think at some point, there might be opportunity for us to, well, about housing options, I know that's something that we.
It's almost a weekly discussion here.
Yeah, and, and it is for us too.
It is a thing to reach out to you guys. I just reached out to Forest Service here on a joint project, but I'll definitely include you or whoever it would be for the Cascade Region, but you have you. I probably should get your contact information if you have a card before you leave and.
Yeah, I'll give that to you.
Okay.
So I think those are the, so upcoming budget, um, I'm, as you all know, I am in the Extension Office Building or Kelly's Whitewater Park Building. Extension 4-H folks really appreciate being in that building. Um, know that things are changing and so we're trying to prepare for that. Uh, we've always had good partnerships with the Extension and 4-H and my presence in that building, I think, has just added. So I really appreciate the staff there and the things that, um, so as a park manager wearing one hat doing partnership and now as a recreation manager doing it differently, um, but just really appreciate office.
I think we have until September before we've got to vacate, so we've got some time to think about it.
Yep.
Here we can go.
My, my understanding as well.
It may be jail. Might be where the offices go. There'll be somebody to let you in and out every night, so.
Nice. I might've joined that. They get free meals. I don't have to clean it up.
A little bit of recreation in there.
Very little, but a little.
Yes. Um, anyway, I, I don't wanna take any more time. I would like to turn it over to Blake and Matt and.
Hey, Blake, welcome.
Thank you. How are you guys all doing?
So, you know, mostly I wanted to introduce myself to all of you. I've met Commissioner Hasbrook a couple of times, but I don't think I've met anybody else in the room. Uh, so I'm Blake Packer. Um, previously I was the Assistant Manager under Teresa for about a year. Prior to that, I was a ranger at Lake Cascade State Park. And then before that, came over from, like, well, I grew up in the area down in Twin Falls, so I'm native to Idaho and loved up here. And so, um, I just wanted to kind of go over some of the things Lake Cascade has planned coming up or things that we've done just here shortly. So we had the Free Winter Access Day that we, and we actually did it out at, uh, Nordic area at Hasbrook Ranch. So that one went pretty good, I think, for all things concerned with weather and, you know, a couple of other things. So I appreciate the help from the Recreation and Nordic Club. Very impressed. Was great to work with on that. And so was El. So that's one of the events we just got done doing, uh, that we have coming up, I'm sure you guys are aware of, is the Idaho Sled Dog Challenge. So this year it's gonna be ran a little bit differently. Start and the finish are gonna be here in Cascade at Van Wyk. So we've got about a week until that starts. It's really gonna be running on the thirty-first and first. So thirty-first, the three hundred mile race will start. On the first, the hundred mile race will start. Be a gap in there where we'll open the program back up on the second. So some of these ice fishermen can get back in there. And then it'll close again on the third, uh, for the ending at the three hundred mile. Some other things that are kind of things that are going on is our RFP right now. Have some questions. So what that RFP stands for is just a, uh, Request for Proposal for Marine Facilities. And so we had, uh, one proposal that we received from A-Rac Resort over at Poison Creek. And also like getting that marina facility. And then Lake Cascade Sport Marina here in town sent in a proposal and they're looking primarily at Van Wyk. Some additional kind of alternative options outside of that. So Big Sage is one of those. Couple of these others, you know, south of the golf course. See, they looked at Crown Point. So there is this kind of a little bit as far as the location.
So Blake, can I ask a question on that? We don't get asked to participate at all as the county. You know, how can we become either a joint agency or something for some of the, the approvals on this stuff? I know that, that that's been kind of a concern in the past, that because of the impacts to the county, is there any way that we can have more input on the placement of these and, you know?
So that's something I'd probably have to discuss more. You know, I don't think
Okay.
Opposition to that, but it's something that we have to continue that discussion, I think. Bureau of Reclamation is another, you know, one that's heavily involved in all of that.
So Blake, when you do like either Van Wyk or Sage or whatever, you have to go through city P and Z? Is that in city limits, you know?
So part of it would be in the city and part of it's in Wildland County. And I think that, um, so, um, VOR is looking to us as an agency to lead the process. And so we certainly can look at, um, structuring some updates and sharing information with you all. Right now, we're in that conversation. We've accepted their proposals and then we're in conversation to, you know, that was in the detail.
Mm-hmm.
To further hash that out, so to speak. And I do expect, um, those to start being placed in the next couple of months. So, you know, I think that at a very minimum, um, coming in, giving you updates to where we are in the process.
And I, and I think, excuse me, very rough, Teresa, and I think it would be really good if you could maybe kind of show us some of the legislation or the ordinances or the, the laws. Some of this is out of our purview. We don't have a right really to stick our nose in it. I know like with Poison Creek out of Tamarack, when they proposed that marina, we heard nothing about it until it was done. And so it's like, well, the county, maybe the county's not able to legally intervene in some of them and ask for some of the things we want. Of course, our big issue is roads and access and, and parking and same issues that we have here. We don't want everybody parking down along the highway curdest to town, you know, those kind of things. But I'm sure, you know, I guess what I'm saying is you tell us if we can stick our nose in, if it's none of our business.
Okay, yep. And I, so I will, um, kind of twofold. I'll, I'll talk to our partners, Blake and I will talk to our partners in Reclamation, find out a little more about their process. We, we do our best to make it as seamless as possible, but there's a lot of, you know, agencies, of federal and estate agencies. So we'll reach out to them. And then from our standpoint, um, you know, I think state parks will always, um, we're doing our very best to be transparent and responsive. And so we'll, we'll do our best to mill that and figure out if a is, you know, a debatable thing or here's the information.
Right.
Or, you know, whatever the case may be. So we certainly wanna be, um, good partners and respectful of some of the reasons.
And I appreciate that. I know Sherri does too. I guess really what, what it comes down to me on a lot of these kind of apps is that when we're gonna do it, we'll build it big enough that it'll last for a while. I mean, if you have to take half of Van Wyk campground to make a marina for parking or whatever issue, then that's okay. I mean, the, the issues like, um, Cabartin put in, we put in a, a boat ramp there and it's it swamped immediately. And we, you know, build it big enough that it's gonna last for twenty or thirty years and we don't have to come back.
Well, and the, the one thing I will say is when we released this RFP, it was with the understanding that state parks as an agency, we are not, we, this is a partnership, but we do not have further. So this is really relying on, um, private investment, whether it's A-Rac or Lake Cascade Sport Marina, give us a and so our, our agency does not have
Is there any grants available for any of that, though?
I, you know, I think some elements, there might be some WIV grants that we can look at, or for example, we have a dump station at Van Wyk that needs some upgrades, so maybe an RV grant. So those would be things that would really be separate from what the, these private groups are bringing to us.
Oh, one of my concerns, we, we are right in the middle of going through our lake management plan, our water management plan. And so the water quality issues are so critical and dependent upon where you place some of those marinas, that could really impact, you know, the water quality. Obviously, everyone wants a healthy lake. I know you guys do too. So that's really what we're looking at. What is the impacts to the long-term? If, if there's a shallower area of the lake versus a, a deeper area lake, you know, I don't know. Dave's working on that more than I am. Talking out of the side of my mouth, I guess, but looking at the overall impacts to our water quality, because we're gonna have to make some tough decisions in the next year. And depending on where a marina may be located.
And especially weight boating, I think that's gonna be a controversial issue once we get to that point where we can make those decisions and that affects a lot of marina profitability and all that kind of stuff. So I guess I appreciate the fact you'll just keep us in the loop. And tell us when, you know, to stick our nose in it too.
We'll figure out those boundaries.
You guys had any interaction with our contractor on that project, the Logan Simpson folks?
Blake has.
Okay. I was just gonna say it'd be good, make sure that we're, you know, keeping those as they're developing, their recommendations. Just kind of keep them updated on what you guys are seeing as well.
And then, so I don't know if you guys have any other questions.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, El.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask you, so one thing is, um, Jerry Worley's, you know, the organizer for the sled dog race, and I've been kind of trying to work with him and Jeff McFadden on some parking issues. They've got a pretty serious problem because they were originally using an off-site location and they were gonna bus people in and now they don't have the bus contractors available. So, um, you know, we were talking about trying to widen out Lakeshore a little bit, you know, when they were plowing it. Jeff said there's no room up there, so any other parking, I mean, in the past, you know, I know so Ponderosa, when we had seven hundred vehicles in there that first year.
We tried it, yeah, same, same issues.
Yeah.
So this is maybe new to me because I had met with Kelly Hadley and would have either been Thursday or Friday.
Hmm.
And I thought that they had at that time, kind of their buses situated and would be bringing multiple, like, Davis Ranch.
They may have found something. They came in last week and talked to us and they were still having trouble.
Okay. So I think they might have found, worked out some of the details with the crossing. One thing that we are gonna help them out with is, there's a vacant lot that Kelly has gotten permission to utilize as for additional parking. Just across the street, um, from the lake brush, right there on the other side of Lakeshore Drive. And so we are gonna go in and have that berma for them. And they're gonna do a little bit more snow removal in there. Uh, and I think what they were primarily gonna use that for was some of the teachers. They've got buses that are gonna be bringing students in. So I think that was part of what they were gonna be using that for, but, uh, I mean, it's definitely ongoing, working with them on traffic and, and the parking. So I'll have to reach back out to them and make sure now that I heard that from you.
Right, yeah, I was gonna say, like I said, that was last week, we were discussing that. I can't remember if it was in here at the, uh, I think it was actually at our groomer advisory meeting on Thursday night.
Okay.
So.
I'll reach back out to them today, so.
It could get ugly.
Let's, let's, I'm hoping not. So I think other than that, I mean, that was really the only, you know, thing that I was really worried about was the traffic concerns. So, um, yeah, outside of that, any, any other questions on the RFP or?
Um, not so much the RFP, but I think this is a perfect example of, you know, we just need more facilities, more campgrounds, more parking lots and keep that in the back of your mind when you, we start talking about expanding further south, you know, past Heron and all that, looking at some more of those and and maybe that's the place we wanna launch dog sleds in the future so that we can take a chunk of that open ground and make a parking lot and 'cause it's an issue everywhere, the parking and the traffic and moving folks where they gotta go.
Yeah, it definitely is. I mean, and we developed the additional parking over Boulder Creek. I mean, that's one that we've added on to for winter access in the last couple of years. Uh, Poison, we expanded that, but it's definitely something that we're looking at. With, outside of the RFP, that was something that we were looking at, trying to change at Van Wyk already was adding additional parking in there. Uh, and it would be very similar to what you were talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Giving up at least half the campground to parking. Uh, and that would just be really, I mean, that could be looked at just to, you know, provide adequate parking for visitation that we currently already see in there. So, yeah, I mean, parking is gonna be a big issue.
Yep.
Yeah, there, this really isn't with the RFP, but, um, like in the fall, you guys close down the bathrooms pretty eas- early. So we get hunters coming in, you get all of the fishermen coming in. Is it, you know, like with a marina, would the bathrooms remain open year round or can we expand or extend the?
So it would be, I mean, that's something that we'd be looking at. Figuring out a plan of how we'd wanna go about what bathrooms we'd wanna leave open, what would get shut down and when. I mean, we still leave, uh, restrooms open and through the fall, we kind of phased them out where we don't see as much visitation. So somewhere like Cabartin is gonna get shut, shut down earlier. Uh, we leave our restrooms open and available through most of October over at like West Mountain and Poison Creek for hunters. So, you know, specifically that are hunting over on West Mountain. And, uh, you know, we phase just certain stuff down, but we don't shut everything down.
There's access for the ice fishermen? That's what we hear about a lot, is the ice fishermen have no place and so they're parking on the roads.
Yeah, I mean, well, as far as restroom facilities, we keep a restroom open in Blue Heron, Van Wyk, and then over at Poison Creek, which are the, any of those access points that we keep open. And then we keep one open over on the north side of the dam. We call it the free lot, but there's that, uh, CXT that's right there before you get to Crown Point campground. And so, I mean, those are the primary ones that we keep open because they're access points too, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Do you guys maintain, or do you, in the summer, do you guys maintain that little access point that's just across the fishing bridge, kind of adjacent to where Mountain Meadows is located?
No, that is actually not ours.
Okay, I didn't know for sure who that was, Forest Service.
Yeah, it's Forest Service, so they would be, we would be maintaining that. Um, we do have a little bit of area that we picked, picked up in our new agreement with Bureau of Reclamation that's just on the other side of the fishing bridge. Um, that we may at some point to look at developing.
That was a good thing right now. If we can pick up ground, it's a positive in today's world.
It's in our agreement with VOR.
Yeah, there was an additional eighty-five acres right there.
Oh, nice.
So, and then I feel like I'm taking up a lot of.
Oh, you're doing great. You've got plenty of time.
Um, some of the other things are, I mean, we're just continuing and this goes back to what you were asking about. I mean, we're gonna continue to groom our Nordic trails. So we've got three Nordic trails that we groom. Um, for cross-country skiing and snow shoeing. And then on Crown Point Trail, we do a loud snowmobiling on one side of the trail. Um, then a couple of projects that we are gonna have coming up that kind of relate back to what you were asking about. So we have a restroom facility that's gonna be getting replaced at Blue Heron. And that's that closest bathroom issue come in. So that'll be. And that's that closest bathroom as you come in, so that'll be getting updated. And then we have a dock improvement, a project that we're trying to complete with Bureau of Reclamation at Blue Heron. So that would look, that would be removing the current dock system and putting in a updated dock system that would be something that's similar to what's at Van Wick.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're looking at different options. Ideally, that's, that ramp can be utilized the longest anywhere on the lake, you know, late in the fall for fishing. So that's one that we're looking at other options too, as far as expanding that ramp, you know, over, over time and expanding that one. That one's pretty narrow, so that's another project we're looking at. And then also, we have some improvements that we're looking at trying to make at Crown Point. And one of those relates back to what you're talking about with the parking. So currently, right now, there's not really adequate parking in there for day use. And so sites one through four, you've been in the campground as you first pull in. First sites, right there off to the left, or one through four, we're looking at developing that for day use parking to help out. I mean, if you've been over there in the summer, right there at, I call it Crown Point Trailhead, right there at the gate that goes down the trail, that parking area is full all the time. And, uh, so we're trying to help alleviate some of that, providing parking just down from there. And then two, that's something that Bureau of Reclamation is looking at long-term, is trying to design more parking right there at that trailhead. And so those are just some of the ones that, that are, you know, coming up that we're looking at. So if you have any questions.
Um, Blake, have you guys had any discussion with like the folks at Pine Lakes to expand that trail north? I know we kind of hit a wall there, I think a few years back, and some private landowners that weren't willing to do anything. Just wondered if there'd been a change.
I haven't picked up where Theresa kind of had left off with that, so I haven't reached out. And I know that's something, you know, with, with the strand and some of the other trail, uh, ideas that we're gonna have to get back to, so.
So that was part of the conversation with the, um, what is the trail group up here?
Pathways.
Like any pathways and that, National Park Grant, for that conversation. We're all getting slammed. We all need to expand.
Yep.
Lots of people come to see us, yeah. Lots of people visiting.
Hey.
Hey.
Matt, you're next.
Matt Lindy, uh, Ponderosa State Park Manager. I believe all of you know, know me, um, who with me. So, uh, thank you for taking the time to put this on the agenda and finish up with, uh, things that we may drop or may miss. Uh, and the RFP over, uh, the lake there is a great example, maybe involving the county, because they've got a dog, maybe a small dog, but they've got a dog in the fight too, as far as where that might go or. Um, Ponderosa, uh, kinda like Blake, we just got done with our free ski day, well attended. Uh, we have a lot of folks that come out and enjoy that. We're in the middle of our grooming right now, so we've got Nordic grooming happening. Uh, that kind of dominates our winter, and then our summer's kind of dominated by camping and day use, so it's kind of the two phases of that part. What else you wanna know about? Let's talk about, uh, housing. Yeah, you guys are doing some housing things here locally. Great. Uh, I have definitely a need as well down there, so if you, uh, if you need to reach out, you know, I don't know what I can offer and I can't speak for my agency, but, uh, I, I'm, our agency's very open to, uh, ideas. Whether it be, you know, and this is way above my pay grade, but maybe we, we donate the land. And maybe we, maybe we have places to put, uh, a housing structure that, that is cooperative between agencies that we're all suffering from.
Matt, what did they decide on the lodge out there? Did they ever make any decisions on that?
The lodge is now tabled right now. Uh, it kind of ebbs and flows with our director. And now that we've changed directors, uh, that's kind of not on the agenda of, of our new director. Um, that, that space where that lodge was gonna go, uh, could potentially, it's starting to get a little bit of traction to maybe potentially put a group campground in. We've got a pretty big use for, or need for that at our, at our facility as far as groups go. So that's kind of the latest, uh, uh, neuron that's firing right now, as far as, uh, where, what that should turn into. So, um, I can't think of anything else that would be, uh, needed of your attention, so if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm sitting here thinking about your comment about donating ground because. Well, there are.
That was on public record, just saying.
It was, but let me, let me back up and say that is something that certainly, uh, uh, you know, is trying to think outside the box. And fix the situation that we're all fighting ourselves in. Uh, maybe our, our agency can entertain that idea. That's kind of why I wanted to speak to that.
So I am working with a group that is trying to find some ground to put in some units. And so if there could be a joint use, this is a large employer, so it, yeah, I might reach out and pick your brain up in.
That would be fine. I could certainly bring the folks in the discussion that, uh, would be able to say yea or nay on that. Absolutely.
And I think it's, it's that, in our agency, I think, just the idea of being creative with our partnerships and what resources we can all share, bring to, I think that's the vein that we're all in right now. And so we have a shared problem. And, and I think that statewide, creative, being creative is a good.
Yeah, and I think it's probably gonna be never-ending. You know, as, as more people come up, it's gonna be more demand. I think honestly, personally, I think the issue is we have too many Airbnbs, short-term rentals. And we've lost that long-term rental market. We've gotta figure out a way to incentivize homeowners to go back to that long-term stuff, but. I wanted to tell you a really quick story. We got about two more minutes. I went down to Bruno Sands Dunes, first time in my life. Spent a couple of days down there. And I got to looking around, I'm sitting on top of a dune one day, and I'm going, this is where old, old picnic tables go to die. From the park service, cause there was like, I counted like forty-seven picnic tables laid out there, and they're all on the desert. Some are tipped over and it's like, this is where they go to die.
Well, I'm hoping to be there in the next week or two, so I'll.
Yeah, take a look around. It's like, I don't know why that table's grew out there, but that's where they put it, so.
Well, they, uh, Bruno's, uh, getting ready to step into a development project. They are gonna have a new observatory. That is going to be world-class and will really, they're very close to having their dark sky designation in the park. Um, and so there's, that's another, um, I'll keep it to Valley County today, but there's some exciting things that are gonna, construction projects that will be starting in the south region this summer. Um, and we want additional camping and day use opportunities, so hopefully be able to spread some of our views out a little bit more.
Well, it's a beautiful, beautiful country, and especially at night. You go out at night, it's, it's just absolutely sparkly, so.
Yep, and this is a good time of year to go versus July.
As far as, um, employees too, I serve, I serve on the state's Workforce Development Council. And we're developing apprenticeships for governmental agencies. So getting into those high schools and getting kids out and wanting to work in the parks where we could help pay their salaries while you guys train them, that's something that we're really looking at. And I can see you guys could greatly benefit from that.
So I would, I would love to talk with you further about that. Our agency, specifically our director is working, um, with, um, the state's universities and colleges to work on that very thing. So internships and apprenticeships, um, that those employees would be able to work directly with our agency, whether it be in the park side, the rec, rec side, administrative. So I'll reach out to you. That'd be awesome.
Thanks, you guys, and you're welcome to come anytime.
We'd love to do that.
You know, quarterly, your Forest Service usually does it quarterly or whatever, just to kind of keep communication going, and that's important.
Yeah, well, we, we appreciate your time.
All right.
Yeah, we look forward to staying in touch.
Thank you. See you guys home.
Congratulations on your advance one too. It's exciting.
Thank you. It's been six months, so, yeah.
I have both of you.
Yeah, it's been very good, so thank you all.
Hey.
Thanks for coming in.
Do you need my number?
Oh, yeah.
I got some, my phone.
You got me in no day.
I will.
We loved him.
Both of them are hopefully are coming back, and they have mad respect for you, so I, I appreciate you giving them the opportunity.
Absolutely, they're great kids.
Thank you, Blake.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep.
You too.
Okay, you guys need a break before we start this public hearing? I'll take a break.
Couldn't hear hardly any of them.
You got a copy of that?
What?
C P stuff I just sent you?
I don't know, Jeff.
Should be right on top if I just sent it to you.
Right. Can I get it back?
This one I just sent to you?
Yes.
That's a C P.
How you doing? Doing well?
Good.
How about you?
Good. I don't want it back.
Yeah. Kind of trying to get back a vote, you know, I'm just waiting for. Yeah, I think that's, yeah, good job.
Well, thanks.
Did you ask my question about when they shut down the parking?
So they told us that they don't. They kind of phase it out and keep key areas open. And have lots of areas open for ice fishing and we can reach back, but.
So they had, like, the main bathrooms open through the year, and then the parking, you know, I think.
I'm thinking of like the, the ones between Van Wick and the boat ramp south. All of those are just locked up around September, where the really good fishing is.
Is it now?
Good to know.
Yeah. That's where everyone used to fish. But you can't get there now. You can't park anywhere. Yeah, I don't know if something's wrong with your speaker, or if they were just talking softly.
Well, the, this thing was going off for most of it. Doug finally turned this off. I can't hear hardly anything with this thing going.
Every once in a while, we, we would hear something.
We did ask that. And then we did ask to be some kind of a joint agency on approval of these marinas that are being proposed.
Approval of the marinas?
Marinas. They have an RFP out right now, so there's. Have feedback in that somewhere.
Do you have something at two forty-five? Did you schedule something? Highway stuff?
Yeah, it's just a discussion. We can just push off the executives after that. The rest of it, we control after this.
Oh, thank you. I just, I was worried.
Letter, or is that the letter?
This one is the one from the planning and zoning.
Oh, that was for planning and zoning.
Yeah.
You've got the other letter for the Forest Service.
Got it. I gotta bear honest with you, I'm behind on this one. I haven't read enough yet. We'll just take it as it comes and see where it goes. Okay, we're gonna move on down to our agenda. Our next item is, uh, public hearing. This is an action item. This is for conditional use permit twenty-one thirty-six, Tamarack Exhort Pub, PUD. Phase unit development. Is that right? Plan unit development. Blue Mountain subdivision amended preliminary plat. So this is amendment to a preliminary plat. Is that correct?
This is an amendment to the planned unit development to include this preliminary plat.
Okay. So the way this will work, it's all open to public hearing. We'll ask if the three commissioners, any ex parte or conflict of interest, go to a staff report. We'll have a presentation by, I'm assuming, the applicant. And then we'll.
Our applicant, right.
And then we'll have testimony, proposed proponents, uncommitted opponents, and any kind of rebuttal by the applicant. And, uh, uh, more questions and deliberations, and then when we kind of reach the end, we'll close the public hearing and make our decision. So at this time, I'll ask if any of the commissioners have any ex parte or conflict of interest?
I do not.
I do not, but in full disclosure, I am a part-time employee of the resort, so.
Are you? Then I think you need to be. That's just my opinion for the conflict of interest in the Local Land Use Planning Act.
Then I will gladly do that.
Okay, so we have, please let the record show that Mr. Bingham has a conflict of interest and will not be a part of this hearing. Um, I have no conflict of interest. In fact, I feel kind of ashamed, but I have not been able to catch up on all this reading and haven't gotten into this very deep yet, so.
It's a pretty shallow one, something that was much deeper before.
Oh, well, that's good to know, cause I got kind of a shallow head. So at this time, I will turn it over to staff.
Okay. So the staff report for the PUD ninety-eight dash one Tamarack Resort. And then CEP twenty-one thirty-six Blue Mountain amended preliminary plat. Um, the applicant is Scott Turlington. The owner is Idaho Pacific Investments LLC. Uh, Tamarack Resort Two applicant and Idaho Pacific Investments LLC owner are requesting a conditional use permit to amend a portion of Blue Mountain subdivision within the Tamarack Resort PUD boundary. This would necessitate a hearing with both the Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of County Commissioners. The plat includes eight single-family lots on approximately thirteen acres within the southern portion of the Osprey Meadows Golf Course on an unvacated Blue Mountain subdivision plat. This site was originally designated as part of the golf course area within the PUD. Uh, lots range in size from one point oh-four acres to one point eight-five acres. The site would be served by individual wells and septic systems until additional sewer and water infrastructure is constructed. Northlake recreational sewer and water lines are approximately two thousand feet in a straight trajectory from the southernmost lot of Tamarack Resort. Lots will be accessed from West Mountain Road on to paved private roads through an existing easement across land managed by the, uh, US Department of Interior, as well as a small section of land owned by Tamarack Resort Two. The construction of roads and utilities is expected during, uh, twenty twenty-four. In the future, when the heritage area is developed within the Tamarack PUD, the access will be changed to the internal road system. The lots, setbacks, roadways, and rights ways will be developed to the Tamarack Resort standards and set forth in the design guidelines. All portions of the golf fairways will be modified to accommodate the lots, redways, and golfing considerations. The owners would like to change the name of the proposed subdivision. A final choice has not been selected at this time. Blue Mountain subdivision was recorded at Book Seven, page forty-three, on June second, nineteen eighty. The original Blue Mountain subdivision plat with the Idaho Pacific Investments LLC ownership overlay is attached. And the proposed subdivision plat is within the IPI LLC, total holdings of approximately forty-two acres. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on December ninth, twenty twenty-one, at a properly noted public hearing. Legal notice for the current public hearing was posted in the Star News on December thirtieth and January sixth. Potentially affected agencies were notified on December twenty-second. Neighbors within three hundred feet of the property line were notified by fact sheets sent December twenty-second. The site was posted on January twelfth, and the notice fact sheet was sent, was posted on the Valley County website on December twenty-second. Agency comments received. Jess Ellis, Donley Fire Department Fire Marshal, listed requirements. In addition, uh, no parking fire lane signs shall be posted on both sides of fire apparatus access roads for all subdivisions within Tamarack Resort. And I, I think the Planning and Zoning Commission had cleared this up that they weren't going to require the signage on both sides of the roads all the way through the resort. Um, it was just in turnaround areas where the fire truck needed to turn around, because people are parking in, um, roundabouts and things like that. Central District Health requires an application, test hold, groundwater monitoring, and an engineering report. Kelly Copery, Valley County Sheriff's Office, and Lori Frederick, Valley County Catastural Specialist, have no issues with the three proposed subdivision names. Travis Pryor, Northlake Recreational Sewer and Water District Manager, stated that the properties located within the Northlake Recreational Sewer stated that the property is located within the Northlake Recreational Sewer and Water District, which was formed to provide centralized sewer to improve public health and water quality in Cascade Reservoir. This property should be served by the connection to the Northlake Recreational Sewer and Water District. Further degradation of water quality in the reservoir may occur if septic systems are permitted in this development. Jeff McFadden, Road Department Director, has no comments. Idaho Department of Environmental Quality provided general comments on air quality, wastewater, drinking water, surface water, hazardous waste, and groundwater contamination. Neighbor comments received, none. Physical characteristics of the site, it's kind of rolling with some scattered timber. Surrounding land use and zoning includes to the north, Tamarack Resort, State of Idaho Department of Environmental Quality; to the south, Tamarack Resort, PUD, unplanted area and golf course; east is the Bureau of Reclamation, Tamarack Resort, PUD Golf Course; and to the west is the State of Idaho Department of Environmental Quality and Tamarack Resort, PUD. Valley County Code lists categorizes this proposal as two residential uses, H, planned unit development, and two residential uses, C, subdivision for single-family residence. PUD 98-1 Tamarack Resort, a planned unit development as approved by CUP 02-04 and 02-05 as amended in the following list and is originally approved. The original West Rock CUP, or grading drainage road utilities and related facilities are attached, and the facilities programs summary was attached. Valley County Code Title 10 subdivision regulations. This title should be reviewed for determination of technical issues with the plat. Standards are allowed to be relaxed as part of the planned unit development. Valley County requires a 70-foot right-of-way width. However, this is a planned unit development, which previously had the reduction in width of the right-of-way approved for the internal private roads, and that was approved for a 50-foot right-of-way. And the PUD also allows lots to have no frontage on a platted road. 9-5H-8 issues of the conditional use permit requires this changed preliminary plat to also be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. Those two previous CUPs that you heard, that were heard last year by the Planning and Zoning Commission, were part of the previously approved preliminary plat. This was not, this is a change in that PUD concept. So this is an amendment from the original PUD approval. So this particular conditional use permit within the Tamarack Resort planned unit development is being reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and approved or denied by the Board of Planning Commissioners. This listed standards for streets, utilities. The compatibility remains the same as the previous planned unit development. Staff comments, the board should be aware that the original planned unit development approved documents include a provision for flexibility in Section I application overview. It reserved the right to modify the facilities plan in a number of ways, provided for preliminary and final plating in future phases, and stated the modifications do not materially change any component of the prior approvals as listed, that was attached. In the future, if there's a material change, the planned unit development would need to be formally amended and processed through the Planning and Zoning Commission along with the Board of County Commissioners as per Valley County Code 9-5H-85. The original approved application is available for review in the Planning and Zoning Office. Attached Idaho Code 42-3212L for review as it pertains to whether or not sewer lines are required to be extended. Of course, it is a decision of the board as to whether or not they will require sewer lines to be extended or if septic systems are adequate until the heritage phase is completed. Attached is the original capital contribution agreement, payments that we could find from 2002 forward, 2007 roadway capital improvements, participants in the roadway capital improvements, and examples of neighboring road development agreement. Conditions of approval are as follows. The application, the staff report, and provisions of the land use and development ordinance are all made a part of this permit as if written in full herein. Two, any change in the nature or scope of land use activities shall acquire an additional conditional use permit. Three, the final plat shall be recorded by December 31, 2025, or this permit will be null and void. Four, the issuance of this permit, these conditions will not relieve the applicant from complying with applicable county, state, or federal laws or regulations or be construed as permission to operate in violation of any statute or regulation. Violation of these laws, regulations, or rules may be grounds for revocation of the conditional use permit or grounds for suspension of the conditional use permit. Five, must comply with all requirements previously approved as PUD 98-01 Tamarack Resort and any subsequent amendments. Six, must have an approved stormwater management plan and site grading plan approved by the Valley County engineer prior to any work being done on site. Seven, prior to final plat, the applicant's engineers shall certify that the roads have been built to approve standards or be financially guaranteed. Eight, must bury conduit for fiber optics with utilities. Nine, applicant's engineers shall confirm all utilities were placed according to the approved plans. Ten, a private road declaration is required to confirm that the road will be maintained by the Tamarack Municipal Association. Eleven, a level of approval is required from the Donley Fire District prior to recording the final plat. This approval does not include the requirement that signs be placed on both sides of all roads. Twelve, to work with Southern Idaho Timber Protective Association along with the Donley Rural Fire Protection Association to implement the wildfire prevention and protection plan, and demand is agreed. Thirteen, CC Narsh should address lighting, wildfire prevention, noxious weeds, and limit each lot to one wood burning device. Fourteen, all lighting must comply with the Valley County lighting ordinance. Fifteen, shall place addressing numbers at each residence and at the driveway entrance if the house numbers are not visible from the road. Sixteen, must have approval from Central District Health. Seventeen, the following note should be placed on the note of the, on the face of the final plat. The Valley County Board of Commissioners have the sole discretion to set the level of service for any public road. Level of service can be changed. Eighteen, at recognition of the final plat, will effectively vacate that portion of the Blue Mountain subdivision as recorded at Book 9, page 43, on June 2, 1980. And then nineteen, shall confirm with the Board of County Commissioners that Tamarack Resort is in compliance with the capital contribution agreement. Since the staff report was completed, I've received additional information, and each of you have a copy of it. One was submitted this afternoon by the Valley County Road Director, and it states that the West Rock Capital Contribution Agreement provided in-kind work at $1.985 million as part of the previous work done. And you have a copy of that was sent to you. CUP email stream with Steve Milliman clarified that the closest sewer line is 2,600 feet. If you cross Tamarack controlled property in 3,500 feet, you go along West Mountain Road. And then also submitted as part of that email stream was the resolution from Northlake Recreational Sewer and Water District. And then on page six, it states, it talks about... People have to hook up if they're within 300 feet. And all that was sent to you. Do you understand Blue Mountain subdivision was platted, recorded in 1980, but it was never, the roads were never constructed?
Yeah, my question, Cindy, is I've tried to find it on the map and I can't. The map that you sent with the staff report is too small to see. For me, do you have something there that kind of lays it out a little differently? I'm assuming that it's south of the main resort around the golf course, but I can't find it in detail.
Yes, on the south end of that. I didn't bring all my books.
You might be a little bit bigger help about that map. And then my question is this, so this is in addition to the PUD. So basically, they're putting this into the original PUD?
Yes.
So our roadways, and I'd like to hear from Jeff, this is a 50-foot wide right-of-way versus our normal 70. So if we're doing a PUD today, we're allowing 50-foot wide in today's?
Yeah, it's, it's part of the PUD process that allows standards to be relaxed. And all their road rights of ways within the Tamarack Planning and Development were allowed to be 50 feet wide. They're private roads, they maintain them.
Is Northlake subdivision to the south, is it sewered or is it on individual septics?
Say that one more time.
Northlake subdivision?
Oh, that's all on septic.
That's all on septic, and this is kind of just north of that?
This is slightly north of that.
Yeah.
It's between, it's kind of right at the southern end of the golf course. This, these eight lots. Blue Mountain was a very large square, you can see it on the sensors.
This is a better... So there's the Northlake.
Mm-hmm.
And this is where this is.
So it's still in there quite a ways.
And where on the map is the, it's 2,400 feet, but does that go to the interior of the existing subdivision or...
I measured from the southern lot on Discovery Drive over by the Eagle's Nest. Tamarack could clarify exactly where they did that measurement. I got 2,000 feet from that southernmost lot to the northern boundary of this. I didn't even include going through this subdivision or actually going along roadways.
And what somebody might clarify for me is where is the closest sewer other than, or outside of the resort itself? I mean, does it bypass this and go down West Mountain at all? It stops basically around, around where it goes in?
Tamarack's the southernmost point.
Okay.
I don't even know if Poison Creek Can Ground has sewer. I think Royal Scott subdivision number six.
Cindy, do you know on your...
Well, you can let me, want me to pull up all this on the...
You can if you want, I guess my, I think it would be nicer to know where the last sewer line is in the Tamarack Resort itself. Is it at Azure Court? Is it Discovery Drive? Is it up the hill a ways?
Anything that has a lot, that's where it's at.
Yeah, and this map's not showing me that, so maybe you could see what you can get up there.
I did not see that either, easily on any map I have.
I'm guessing it's Azure Court, but I could be wrong.
So Cindy, there is currently no sewer south of Tamarack at all.
No.
I thought it was a lot further down. I thought it was a lot further down. The mountain subdivision, when we're looking at this, Blue Mountain subdivision, okay. There's a large, is there any portion of that that has been developed? Because the original plat, no.
The road access points are kind of roughed in, I can show you.
The plat is a little confusing on our hand to look at. This plat's on page 22 that I'm looking at. It's multicolored, but it shows entrances, two entrances onto West Mountain Road. But then there's also a 36-acre portion right in the middle of it. That must be the golf course. Our maps aren't real clear. Scott may have something that's a little more clear.
Here's the Northlake subdivisions right here. Purple, right here is the Blue Mountain subdivision.
That section, right?
That whole colored area is what was recorded.
Okay, so the large parcel...
It's the Blue Mountain subdivision. Never been constructed or developed. This is an access point up West Mountain, and this is an access point. This subdivision is located up in this area of it, and it does not follow the lot lines. If I can show you better...
A portion of that's going to become the golf course. Is that correct? Where the, where the...
Golf course.
Okay, Cindy, right there, where your arrow is right now, what is that? Is that going to become the golf course? Is that part of the plat?
That's part of the golf course. This piece right here is what's being planted.
So Cindy, do we know what's gonna have, happen to the rest of that, around that? Is it gonna be more?
The Blue Mountain?
Yeah, is it that many lots or is it just these eight?
Well, it's these eight right now.
So there's more lots are coming?
In the future, the heritage, what we call the heritage, will go in this location.
Gotcha.
Will go in the rest of that footprint.
So we're gonna have lots of homes in there?
Yes, as part of the original PUD approval. There were, what, 2,043 residential units? And a lot of those go down here in the heritage. But this road system within this will eventually weave into this part of the heritage that is coming in the future.
Okay, so then looking at...
This lot, I'm sorry, is right here.
That's that Azure, yeah. So it's not, is that the 2,600 feet that...
Yes.
Okay.
I measure as the crow flies. This lot, you know, this is what I can get. From here to...
Just to get to the site that's being developed?
As the crow flies. If you go down where you would put the utilities and the roads and things, it turns into 2,600 internally and 3,000 and some if you go down West Mountain Road. And if you go to the southern part of this, 2,900 to this part.
Go down to the bottom of the purple and see how far that is. So 3,500 feet.
This current subdivision. Only this portion right here is where we're looking.
So that's the only access point where you're, where you are right now, where your cursor is?
Yes, this will be the access. This is Bureau of Reclamation. This right here is owned by Tamarack, and IPI owns this. That will be the constructed access until they do the heritage. But this road here, this bald road, this is the lay-down yard. I mean, you can actually get through here for emergency. That road is there. It just isn't reported on the plat right now. It's dirt.
Any more questions for Cindy?
Right now, not yet.
Okay, so then I'm going to move on down, and we'll have a presentation by the applicant.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Steve Milliman, representing Tamarack Resort and also presenting this application on behalf of Idaho Pacific Investments. To address a couple of the questions I was hearing, Sinda, if you could put that Blue Mountain back up and show the subdivision boundaries. There you go. So everything else within Blue Mountain subdivision is golf course and will be golf course. So there will be no more homes platted within the Blue Mountain subdivision. That plat will be vacated as part of this process. The heritage development, which is part of the original PUD, comes down to the north and to the west of this. And there, of course, will eventually be homes there, but not in this Blue Mountain subdivision purple area.
So that would be the area to the west, so to speak?
That's correct, to the west, down even to the south a little bit and to the north as well. This property is perched in the southeast corner of the resort and is where several of the existing golf holes are that will be rehabilitated and brought back online. When heritage is developed, then there will be a second means of access internally from the development.
Steve, do you know, does, is heritage planned to be sewed?
Yes. And that's why the, the application contemplates that as heritage is, heritage is platted, then these eight lots will be connected to that central sewer. And in fact, as part of the development of these eight lots, the dry lines for that will be put in place.
Will, okay.
Okay, that changes the whole color of it.
And that bald road, road then, Steve, will go away? Is that, right now, that will go right into the middle of the golf course then, right?
Right, so the, the plat, if you look at it, shows actually a road running to the west boundary of this subdivision. That's the one that would be extended into the heritage area. Or, or the other way around, the heritage will, will get to that road. So, yes, what the application provides is that when heritage is developed, then these lots all go off of individual systems and onto the central system. The, the current scenario is the closest internal manhole of the central sewage system is at the south end of Discovery Drive, the paved portion. That's, that's on a linear measurement, twenty-six hundred feet from this development. If you went up West Mountain Road, the nearest manhole is, Sherry, per your question, almost, it's not all the way to the entrance, but it's not too far south of the entrance, and that's the thirty-five hundred feet if you were going to go make contact with that. So for an eight lot subdivision, that would not be a requirement you would normally impose. The other important thing to keep in mind is these lots are all nearly a half mile from the lake, somewhere in the range of twenty-two hundred feet. And the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations and your staff's recommendations are, of course, that final plat would be contingent on Central District Health approval. So it's, the burden's on the applicant to demonstrate suitability of soils and water table. Test holes have already been placed. Jim Frank is supervising that. Based on his experience elsewhere in the area, he's confident that it will be feasible for individual systems, but they have to go through that process of monitoring through the spring runoff.
So let me ask, is, so during the heritage portion of this, will the sewer come from within the resort or down the road? And I'm looking at long-term planning capabilities to see connection points to the south, and that's the reason for my question.
I think the, the most likely answer is from within the resort.
Within the resort.
That isn't to say, however, that wouldn't provide connection opportunities for property to the south, but that's always been the, the layout of the sewer plan is to come internally down into heritage rather than down West Mountain and over into it.
Steve, I noticed, and I think it's a pond right on the, on the lakeside of the development. It looks like a, kind of a banana-shaped pond. Is there, is that a permanent water fixture? Is that going away? Because Central District Health's going to have a concern about water that close to any kind of septic.
Scott, you, this is Scott Turlington, who's president of the resort.
Commissioner, that, it's not a permanent feature. A portion of that will be going away during the renovation of the course, at least half of it. And the other half's just aesthetic. It's one that we, we created when we initially built the course, but we are going to fill half of it in so that it, area of that will be greatly reduced.
And Jim, we just spoke with Jim the other day. His initial evaluation is that there's only one lot in here that he anticipates could present any challenge, and that's because there's an intermittent stream that runs into this property. And so there would obviously have to be a setback from that. He thinks at worst it would involve some tweaking of the lot line between that lot and the adjoining lot, but thereby keeping all the lots still above your one acre minimums for individual septics. So what you have before you is an eight lot subdivision, all lots larger than an acre. It is a, a replat, as Sinda indicated, of the, of a portion of the Blue Mountain subdivision. This property is already within the Tamarack Planted Unit Development, so it is not being added, it's already there. It previously was platted for golf course. These thirteen acres will be utilized for these eight lots. Now, I represented West Rock and Tamarack from the ground up, was involved in the preparation of all the homeowner's documents, all the permitting, county, state, and federal, and it's with a certain degree of pleasure that I find myself re-involved with the new ownership group. And this particular application is, is exciting to me because it is part of the implementation of a settlement between Idaho Pacific Investments, the owners of the golf course, and Tamarack that will enable that golf course to be rehabilitated and placed back online and for Tamarack to be in control and ownership of that. That's been a long time coming. One of the owners of Idaho Pacific Investments is T.J. Angstman. He's here today and could certainly answer any questions if you have any. But it's a large step forward for the resort to get that conflict resolved in a way that both parties are, are happy with. This comes to you, as Sinda indicated, on a favorable recommendation from your Planning and Zoning Commission, subject to the, among other things, Central District Health's approval of the individual systems, which, as I indicated, will be placed in full compliance with Central District Health standards and regs, but with the intention of being taken offline when heritage is developed and with the dry lines associated with that placed now, not, not later. That requirement would be visible on the plat as well as in the covenants, so any purchaser is on notice that that eventually is, is going to happen. The, uh, the property is eligible for individual systems under your ordinance. It is eligible for individual systems under the IDAPA regs, which govern Central District Health. In fact, those regs provide that it, the applications here could be denied if a central system was reasonably available. If you look at the various IDAPA regs for individual systems, for private plants, they range from reasonable availability, meaning within three hundred feet for individuals, and a thousand feet for plants. So under either of those, these lots are well, well beyond the reach or availability of the central system. We went through the distances to the central system. You have in your packet a letter from Travis Pryor from North Lake Sewer District stating that his opinion is that these lots should be connected. He quotes Section 10 of Resolution ninety-seven dash six, which has language which frankly can be read either way as far as whether or not individual systems are allowed in the district. What's important is in Section 10, the resolution provides that it's unlawful to discharge any sewage or other polluted waters, except where suitable treatment has been provided in accordance with subsequent provisions of this resolution. Goes on to say, except as hereafter provided, individual septics are not allowed. Now, what Mr. Pryor did not include is the full resolution. I think you have that now, Sinda, is that correct?
I have what you sent to me.
Okay, that's the complete resolution that was provided by Mr. Pryor. What's important about that is if we go all the way back to Section twenty-seven, it provides that where a public sanitary sewer is not available, the building sewer shall be connected to a private sewer disposal system complying with all rules, regulations, standards, and recommendations of any local, state, or federal authority having jurisdiction. And then at such time as the public sewer becomes available, a direct connection will be made. So this plan is squarely within the parameters of Section twenty-seven of the district's resolution, which was not provided to you and should have been provided to you, because the implication of the section that was quoted is a district doesn't allow individual systems, and that is not correct.
So, Steve, I guess my question, or maybe this is for Sinda, is you guys have already designed that, that wording that's going to go on each deed of each one of these lots that says, as soon as central sewer comes into heritage subdivision, when you will be required to hook it up?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Hasbert, the first place it'll go is on the plat itself.
Okay.
As a plat note, because that's the starting place that all purchasers should go to, and it's a recorded document. And so the plat note will reflect that all lots will connect to a central system when it becomes available and that the individual systems will be abandoned. I would anticipate, and we'll work with T.J. on this, that then the covenants for the subdivision would repeat that, and then the deeds would make reference to the plat and to the covenants. So any consumer will be fully on notice, and, and I would think would, would be happy to hear that, that, that they are going to get connected to a central system as, as the rest of the resort develops.
So Sinda, I'm assuming then when we get the final plat, it'll, we'll have to look for that on that final plat?
It would be in the notes, and I would anticipate that there'd be a declaration of installation of utilities to summarize all of that, also as, as well as in the CC nerves.
Is there anything on the plat or somewhere in the lot or the covenants that, that takes care of somebody who doesn't look onto the main system, just decides to keep their old septic and drag it out? Is that a, is there enforcement, I guess?
I, I believe that there would be enforcement. I know that when North Lake was created, wagon wheels and things like that, everybody had to abandon.
Okay. The next question, I guess, is maybe for, for Steve. I don't know who to ask it to, but when do you guys think heritage will be put in? How long are these going to be here before we see them hooked on to main sewer?
Mr. Chairman, we don't have an exact date. We know it's within the next couple of years. As you know, that property is currently under the ownership of DEQ. We have an option to purchase that back by a date certain, which I believe is twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, so.
Okay.
Or the end of twenty-four. So we're within a couple of years of doing that, and, you know, I would expect that's for us when we do acquire that property back. You know, one of our first orders of business will be to get the system in down there so that we can move forward with the development. And I think that's important simply because these eight lots, as Steve mentioned earlier, the infrastructure is being placed in there today as they build, so all the dry pipe goes in. So it literally becomes a function of, of then hooking in from the roads going by down Discovery, tying into the system. So I think also to your question on how do you enforce it, these eight lots are subject to the resort's design review guidelines, and DRC would not sign off on any lot that does not abandon the, the septic and tie into the system. So we do have some internal controls there as well. But at the broader level, we're, we're, you know, a couple of years out before we get into that portion of heritage.
Well, then, I guess my next question, and I'm not one for computers, but what I can't just figure out in my head is, we know what the distance is, say, from this line to the nearest, what's the distance from here to heritage? Isn't this a longer distance? Wouldn't this be shorter and cheaper to go that way instead of going to heritage?
Um, if you're talking about for the, um, the central line, the sewer line? It, it'll be, a lot of it's based on the gravity feet and, and how the lines have to be installed in order to achieve the gravity flows that we have before they get to a lift station, which the lift station here is on West Mountain Road up towards the main entrance. So the way, the way we've laid it out to get to our optimal gravity flow is the twenty-six hundred feet, so that we do have the gravity that we need to flow that down. So there's, there's still, there's maybe some other options that we haven't explored. We just did this after we received the district's letter trying to understand where they were going. So we're within that, you know, two thousand to three thousand feet distance of getting into the system, which ends at the end of Discovery today. Yeah, and heritage, heritage is, is north of all that as well, and so as it comes down, you know, our responsibility will be to get that infrastructure to the edge of the subdivision, and then everything else will tie into it from there, from those lots.
So I just want to make sure I've got everything straight in my head. So this corner here, it's heritage? This is all heritage?
Uh, yes, sir.
So this would probably be the closest spot?
But, but to the extent that there's a, a place to tie in at that spot, probably wouldn't be the case there. It's going to be over on your main road, so you can?
Over on this road.
Yes, sir. That's where, we, we typically run all the, the main lines through our primary roads coming through the resort, and so.
That little tiny flagship narrow strip is your control also? So then your control, right next to the northern boundary, that?
Uh, that's currently DEQ. That will be ultimately when we acquire it back, yes.
To some extent, we have to rely on the experts, but the engineers report that the connection into heritage will be much, much, much easier to make than trying to now push north into the development. And Tamarack's commitment as part of this is as heritage is platted to, to bring a line to the subdivision boundary. The anticipation is that will be, from an engineering point of view, much, much more palatable than trying to go twenty-six hundred feet that would be required to go up to Discovery right now.
I see, I see. So basically what we're saying is, correct me if I'm wrong, but to go up to Discovery, we got to pump it up there to come off of Heritage towards the lake. It's all gravity fed. That's where the savings is, okay.
Yep. And that's, that's a big, big deal.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, and that's Tamarack's commitment, and we're happy to have it memorialized in whatever fashion the, the board feels is necessary. On the enforcement issue, also keep in mind that Idaho Code forty-two dash thirty-two twelve requires any inhabited property that's within two hundred feet of a central sewage system to connect to it. So at that point, the district's resolution would be in sync with state code as well as with the plat notes, as well as with Tamarack's commitment.
And, Sinda, that would also, before we issued a building permit, that would be within our purview not to issue a building permit unless that's, oh, no, never mind. It'd already be built. It'd already be built, never mind.
Okay, any more questions for the applicant?
Steve, can you answer two? So that section of the Bureau, I think it's B O R ground, that you guys are crossing for access points right now? You already have that agreement in place?
There's already an easement there, yes.
And that will be negated in the future because you will use all internal roads or that will remain that place?
I think that will still be, I think that will still be a point of access. There'll just be two then instead of the one.
And how far is that access up to any current pavement?
Uh, pavement, I think, does not extend below the entrance, does it, Scott?
On that side, you're correct. And then on the resort side, it stops where the manhole is off the Discovery today. That's where the pavement is today.
On West Mountain Road, you're talking about West Mountain Road, Sherry?
Yeah.
Pavement on West Mount?
If the, if the board is interested at this point, noting that one of the conditions deals with the capital contribution agreement, I'd be happy to give you a report on where the resort is on that, or if you'd rather defer that, we can defer it.
So we are going to request a workshop and bring you guys in, bring in the road department. We'd like to take a thorough look at that.
Right.
We would like to start some strategic planning for transportation needs in the county, and would love to have you guys partner with us on that.
That, that would be perfect. Yeah, we've done a, I've done a pretty detailed analysis. I helped negotiate that agreement. I'm confident Tamarack is in compliance today, but there are a number of go-forward issues that we'd like to talk about also, so.
And I, and I agree with you. When we met last year about the employee housing, we talked about paving that road, and we didn't really get a solid answer on what phase that was going to go in, so we'll, we don't have time today to do that kind of work, but I think that's great. You guys are willing to come in.
Oh, yeah, we look forward to it.
We'll get it scheduled and go from there.
Yeah, it's in everybody's interest to get back on the, on the same track with that agreement. There are a number of issues with it, but all manageable, and some that we need And some that we need to talk with you about, and I'm sure vice versa.
Sure.
But that agreement was, that agreement flowed from, and you may remember this, the county commissioners commissioned a physical impact analysis of their own that Tamrac paid $50,000 for, or West Rock at the time, from CH 2M Hill, to identify impacts on the county and all taxing districts at buildout. And then that physical impact analysis that was done for the county became the basis for this capital contribution agreement, so...
Steve, do you remember off the top of your head, was there any discussion that about the S Bridge?
Yes.
Okay.
It's in there. Yeah, it is actually project four of the four projects that are identified in the capital contribution agreement. It's non-specific as to what's going to happen. One of our points of frustration, and maybe you can help us, is that one of the first payments made by West Rock pursuant to that agreement was to fund a corridor study that would flesh out the four road projects, put some scope to them. And I don't know, nobody seems yet to be able to find it. So that would, you know, if it exists, it would be helpful. But nonetheless, yes, that is what, that's about the only one of the four projects that hasn't actually been completed or substantially completed. And we can talk about the structure of that because the agreement's very clear on how, what Tamrac's participation is. And as Cinda mentioned, the road from Tamrac Falls to the resort was done at 100% Tamrac expense instead of the 30% that's in the agreement in order to get that done. I think that's the $1.9 million contribution that the road department...
Well, my feeling is as long as Tamrac pays for everything, we'll get along fine.
Exactly. Well, you've got to have a point to start the negotiations.
You know, we're starting somewhere.
I'm ready for an earthquake and FEMA can fix the S Bridge.
Yeah.
We're going to go on down our public hearing. We're going to run out of time.
Thank you for the time.
Any more questions for the applicant? Okay, we're going to open it up to testimony proponents. If anybody wants to add anything more to this, actually come to the mic to state your name and the town you live in.
Good afternoon. TJ Engsman, 88 Golden Bar Donnelly here.
Okay.
I'm a member of IPI and my partners I know are on the line listening. And they're the larger partners, but I'm here so I can, I can talk to you. One point that I think nobody's mentioned yet is that we're planning to provide financial guarantees for the installation of all the public utilities right now. So we'll be posting a bond for the installation of these dry lines. And then we'll install them right away over the next summer so that any smart builder will be running those dry lines right to where the septic is so that you can just turn it on when this happens. It's not a difficult thing to envision, that's the way it'll take place. And that's what we'll be requiring. It will be in our covenants. It'll also be, you know, in the plat as Mr. Milliman provided. But I think with that financial guarantee, and it's something that's important to us, we've had, we've already got numbers from Granite Excavation, a local contractor. And it's expensive to put the dry lines in, but it's the right thing to do. It's what, you know, the buyers will want, and it's what we want. And being 2,200 feet from the lake, we do feel that it's a safe opportunity here to do this. I also just need to point out that we already have, we do have lots there that if, you know, so we could put septics in without, without, we can just issue, ask for a building permit at this point since the plat is there. But we're trying to do this right and make it look good and also make the lots a little larger and utilize the space there to be more fitting with the golf course so that their golf course development goes well. And there's no conflicts between our lots and their lots. And that's why the design looks the way it does. It's a little bit of a unique design, but it does allow for the owners of this property and the owners of the golf course to coexist peacefully rather than have overlapping lots over cart paths and those sort of things.
Did you have a question for you on that capital improvement, the pipes and all that? Does that include the lift station at the bottom?
My understanding is that that will be, because it'll take the flow from North Lake or from the Heritage development, that that's what Tamrac will install. We'll have our lines running to there.
Okay.
And then it'll drain into a pit. I don't know how deep it, it's a concrete basin where the pump heads will mount and send that wherever it's supposed to go.
From there, they all have to pump it up to either West Mountain or into whatever, I forgot the name of it.
Wherever it gets to receive properly and safely.
They're in charge of that.
Yeah, but we'll provide the lines all the way to there so that when they want to, when they want to power it up, we'll just have to, we should just have to turn the switches on our lots to send it. It may not be that simple so that somebody doesn't make a mistake and send it down there without a pump at the end. But it should be fairly simple, you know, a backhoe and a few hours of work.
Right.
I also want to clarify, just to make a point of clarification on the access. On the West Mountain Road, once they connect us to Discovery Drive, it's my understanding that what we'll have is local access where the owners of these eight lots may be able to go out in and out there in case of an emergency or cases like they're going to the lake or it's convenient. But it's not going to receive the traffic of the whole resort coming out this new spot. That's not the plan. That's, they don't want it, we don't want it. That's not going to happen. And so there will be two accesses, but I think for ordinary, it'll be Discovery Drive for most folks, yeah. And that's really, I just, any other questions I could answer?
Is each well going to be, or each lot going to be on an individual well?
They will be, yes. But they also, we're installing those dry lines as well, so...
Oh, the water lines too?
Yeah.
Because I know that's how most sewer districts, when they have a break in the sewer, the first thing they do is shut off the water.
Right, right.
And they got to have that capability, so...
So our plan is to, is to install the dry lines for both. And I don't know where the, you know, we don't have a debate right now over the water, so no one said where the nearest water main is. But I think that that will all be developed as part of their heritage development. And hopefully at that point, it'll loop the system and then that's when we would be connecting to it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that is a proponent? Move on into uncommitted. Anyone in the audience uncommitted? Look, please let the record show there was none. We'll take testimony of anyone who is opposed. Anyone opposed, online or in the audience? Please let the record show there was none. I don't think there's really anything that we need to rebut or talk about. Anybody else have any questions before I close this public hearing?
One question that I would, have you seen a copy of theirs, CCNRs at all? Will they allow short-term rentals in this?
They do allow, Tamrac does allow short-term rentals. We have, we have like 100 out of Tamrac.
Just because I don't know, and maybe somebody who knows in the audience, are those wells on those private lots then capped after you hook on to Main Sewer Water? Are they still functional? Anybody know?
In the past, when someone is hooked to Central Water, they've always been capped. In my past history.
In terms of, don't hold me to this comment, but I think our plan would be to cap them because we will have water and sewer. And to the extent that we will have those eight lots tied into the water system, the use of those wells could be capped. I mean, I would imagine that would be the most reasonable thing to do at that point.
I just wonder if we could use them to supply water for fire, like into a tank, you know, bury tank or something like that. But we'll let you guys figure that out. If there's no more questions or comments, I'm going to close.
I do have two conditions of approval.
Okay, what do you got?
Entire Blue Mountain subdivision will be vacated as part of this application. And not just the pieces going into this. It'll be a part of your motion. And then dry lines for sewer and water will be part, will be put in with road development.
Put in the road development?
Will be put in with road development.
Oh, okay.
With road development.
As they build the roads into these houses?
Trail roads. As they build the roads in their subdivision, naturally they'll put in the dry lines.
Do we need to specifically call it out during road construction? Or we just put, dry lines will be installed prior to building permits being issued?
How about will be put in?
Oh, during construction?
As part of construction. Because they won't be put in perhaps prior to that. I don't know when they're going to...
Hey, did you send us a kind of a rough motion to make? I don't think I've seen one.
No, this would just be a approval of the preliminary plat and...
You're going to help us with that motion? Okay, and then at this time, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. I'm excited to hear the fact that these lots aren't going to be sewed eventually. And I understand that, you know, people need to raise money to do other things with it. And I think this is the goal. It will solve the issue with the golf course, which I think is a huge draw, not only for Tamrac, but for all the guys that want to go for a walk. And I think that's awesome. I'm excited about that. Anything you want to add or say?
No, I think this makes sense. And it's in addition to the resort itself. It takes care of the golf course, which we all want to move forward and be done with that conversation. And it will be a great enhancement to our economy here, having the golfers up on the golf course. I don't have a problem with this. I, you know, we do need to put in it that you guys do have to attach during this process, which you've already planned on. My, my largest concern going forward and the reason that I'd like to kind of convene a session is West Mountain Road is a nightmare. And we have to find some long-term solutions there with your guys' expansion plans. So we do need to sit at a table together and have that discussion about when and how we're all going to work together to make this happen.
Okay, so at this time, then I would entertain a motion to approve. Am I going to say this?
CP 21-36, the Blue Mountain amended preliminary plat. Want me to make it?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Sorry. With conditions of approval being that the Blue Mountain, the prior, priorly approved, Blue Mountain subdivision, it will be entirely vacated. And dry lines will be installed during construction for fewer, future sewer hookup with North Lake sewer and water.
Anything else we're missing?
No, as long as it reads with conditions of approval and includes enough to additional ones. Because we had a whole bunch of other conditions.
I amend my, my motion to read with the conditions of approval as set forth by our Valley County Planning and Zoning Commission with the addition of the two approval items that I just stated. Clarity on that, do they meet dark sky over there? Was there any dark sky ordinances? Okay. Hasn't been settled yet? We need to...
No, I was trying to find how many conditions of approval we have now. I think it was 16 or something, but I can't find it.
There were 19.
So we have 21 conditions of approval? Is that correct? Hope we're not forgetting anything. So I'll second that motion. Any more discussion?
So just for clarification, this approves the preliminary plat and authorizes us to work through that vacation portion. But the final plat will go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission even with the financial guarantees. And then it will come back to you for final approval. And final authorization of the capital contribution, I mean the financial guarantees. Those financial guarantees are typically worked out between the four county commissioners, Valley County engineer, and Valley County court.
So you're talking about the bond to put the dry lines in right now? And then P and Z will handle the issue with the lives or the intermediate stream going through that one lot? And they'll look at all that and the preliminary?
Yeah, before they go back with the final plat, they're going to get their central district health approval so that they can remove the sanitary restrictions. And then they'll, because when they do the final plat, that's finalizing where those lot might be.
Right.
And then it will come back to the board. This process done.
And actually, Cinda, number 18 was the recartation of the final plat, which will effectively vacate that portion of the Blue Mountain subdivision.
Right, but when I wrote that, I was just thinking of the part that was included in here. But Steve Milliman had stated that it was the entire Blue Mountain.
Okay.
They were trying to vacate.
Okay.
And then before we vote, we'll be attached to you guys here pretty quick to do this work session. We'd like to do that kind of when it's slow in the winter time because we all know how we get when the grass starts screening up. So we got a motion second on the table.
So hold on one second.
Sure.
Jeff, we talked earlier about doing some kind of dust mitigation down to this for the entrance. I guess what...
We're going to initialize this on a meeting?
That would be part of the capital contribution agreement discussion. It should be, happen in probably at the next meeting to get it started.
Yes. And it does state in here that they will work with the road department and Valley County commissioners on any road development agreements. Okay, I will withhold that then until we have that meeting?
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Good luck, you guys. I hope we can get the golf course going back and it all works.
So commissioners, I do have a signed and notarized copy of our road maintenance agreement. I did email a copy to Jeff and this is the original. So if I can leave that with you for your signature?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay.
It hasn't been signed?
I think I've signed it.
Is there a new one, Scott?
Do you, TJ?
It's on the agenda for the seventh. That's the one that Jeff indicated that he wanted on the agenda. It was placed on the agenda for the seventh.
Okay, so Doug will hold this until we have that meeting and then we'll get her done. All right, thank you, everyone.
Scott, you did do the property tax analysis.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I'll send it to him.
Okay, our next, our next agenda item is Highway 55 disclosure discussion. Commissioner Mopin, I think this is to talk about if we've heard yet on Highway 55 being open.
And let me see if we have had any news at all. We've not yet had any news. So my concern is this, we are not going to be meeting until February 7th at this moment in time. And if that road does remain closed for the next week, we may have to call an emergency meeting just to discuss how we're going to get groceries down there, medical supplies down there. And a long-term solution for some financial aid to our businesses up here, Cascade really suffers when that road is closed. And so we're going to have to look long-term depending on the outcome of how long that thing is closed. And since we don't know anything yet, we really can't make any, any decisions on anything. So we are just going to have to call a special meeting.
What you might want to do is kind of get, bring Juan into the loop, let him know what you're thinking about, whether we declare this an economic disaster or emergency disaster.
Commissioners, I...
I don't know how that's going to...
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's a... I just don't know if the county has any authority because it's a state highway. I don't know. That if we can have...
I think that's where...
Do some research as well as potentially want, that would be the direction that the county could take.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, then I hate to tell everyone this, but our next agenda item is an executive session. So we're going to have to ask everybody to leave. I need a motion to go into an executive session per Idaho Code 74-206-1B.
So moved.
Are we supposed to have anything else going on, Dave?
I thought there was some like meeting about the highway.
Oh, that was what we were just...
We were hoping to find out more about it.
Sorry.
So I got a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
It's moved and seconded by roll call, please.
Benjamin, aye.
Mopin, aye.
Hasbrook, aye. And Doug will be in about 3:10.